Good afternoon, everyone. Today is September 23rd, 2025. This is a Prescott City Council's Study Session. We'll start with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Frueworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Grady.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Moore is excused from the meeting.
Well, we have two items for study today. City Clerk, would you please read the first item on the agenda?
Presentation and discussion regarding a proposal to convert Kenlin Lee Field to synthetic turf.
Good afternoon. Hi, everyone. Kristi Diaz-Trahan, your Parks and Recre-- or, excuse me, Recreation Services Director. I will be presenting in partnership with the President of OJBFC. The-- he will-- Glenn will come up, provide information about the project, and then when he's finished, I'll come back and talk about some historic use and savings opportunities, and then we can open it up for questions. So with that, I would like to invite Glenn to come on up.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Let's see. Approved. It's not going any further.
Yeah. IT, can you guys pull up the OJB presentation, please? Thank you.
Okay. Well, good afternoon. My name's Glenn Diutolo. My wife's Sharon. Our residence is Prescott. We love Prescott. We moved here 13 years ago. I'm also the President of OJBFC, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit youth organization based here in Prescott. We'd like to thank the Council for taking the time to listen to our proposal. We think it's going to be a terrific opportunity for Prescott, Yavapai College, and the community. OJBFC's proposal, our proposed donation, will significantly increase opportunities for the families in the community. We believe it'll triple, more than triple, the amount of field usage on unprecedented FIFA quality, which I'll talk about in a second, synthetic field at Kenlin Lee Park, and significantly reduce water consumption and maintenance costs, which Kristi said she will speak about. And obviously, it'll be a win-win situation for the City of Prescott, Yavapai College, and OJBFC. And it'll bring regional and national notoriety to the City of Prescott. When these fields are built, these FIFA-rated fields, you can get all kinds of high-level quality games. It'll bring a lot of notoriety to the area. And the best part of it all would be at no cost to the city and the taxpayers. This is all privately funded. I'd like to take 10 minutes to just give a quick, brief background on OJBFC, then present our proposal. We have three requests, which the Council will have to take time to decide on. And then I'll give you a visual of what the field would look like after our renovation. And obviously, at any time, please stop me with any questions or comments. OJBFC was founded for the purpose of maximizing the opportunities for the kids in our community. My wife and I have been blessed through our businesses and investments that we wanted to give back to the community. And the genesis of this entire project was my parents owned a Montessori school and three day camps in the Philadelphia area. They mentored 10,000 kids over 50 years. So once my wife and I made our money, we wanted to give back to the community, and this is one of the ways we're doing it. We'd like to be anonymous, but in this case, it wasn't available to us. And we're going to do it through academic, soccer excellence, and flourishing vocational careers. One thing we learned is a lot of kids that are coming through the high school ranks decide not to go to college, so we're also helping them in the vocational areas. As I said, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit based here in Prescott. We were formed in 2021, but myself is the founder. I've been involved in soccer since I was a child, full scholarship, paved my way through college, got my first job at Cooper's and Lybrand, a Big Eight CPA firm. So I know the value of academics and sport. So that's why we're putting our emphasis and our funding behind a project like this. We know how it can change kids' lives. OJBFC, the acronym stands for Ojogo Benito Football Club. Ojogo Benito, Portuguese for "the beautiful game." We-- our ultimate goal is for the kids to play creative, attacking, beautiful soccer. So we came up with the name OJBFC, Ojogo Benito. So that's the genesis of the name. The biggest reason our club is so successful is it's affordable and accessible. Right now, youth sports has become a pay-to-play, I guess, model, you could call it. And it gets too expensive for a lot of the families in our area to play. So we subsidize it, and we make sure that no kid's ever turned away from OJBFC. We've never had a child turned away through socioeconomic reasons or their ability to play. We always find a place for them within our club. And I'll talk about our growth in a second. The other thing we focus on is the holistic player. A lot of clubs are just focused on the soccer side of it. We really put an emphasis on the academic side and trying to make them, prepare them for the real world at the end of their tenure with us. And then finally, we want to build a community and culture, which we think Prescott has a great opportunity to do that through the local soccer and the families. We're already seeing a culture pick up, and you'll see it through our growth. And this stadium would be a home away from home for the kids, meaning we think they'll be very comfortable coming to this facility, and they're really adapting to our methodologies. Our objective, one of our objectives, we want our kids, we want to teach our kids to be competitive and excellent, kind of like the David versus Goliath mentality, meaning you've got to compete in life. And athletics is a great way to teach kids how to compete. No matter where they're at, on the playground, getting their first job, you're competing against somebody. So we try and teach them, give them the skills to compete. And we like the feel of coming from a small town, we can compete with the best teams in the country. We've taken teams internationally and competed in the largest youth club tournaments in the world. So regardless of their ability, we try and teach that competitive excellence. Our club is different by design through the curriculum we put together, which is a blending of American soccer models, the European and South American. Georgie, our sporting director and myself, we played around the country. We studied the game all over the world, and we're bringing the best of the best to our kids at an extremely affordable price. I think we're the least expensive club in all of Northern Arizona. And our curriculum is sophisticated and innovative training methodologies. Like I said, we're blending a lot of different playing styles, which I won't go into in detail. Our programs range, right now, we have 400, and that number's growing by the day, but when we presented this, it was 413 total players. We go from recreational development academy. Academy's four versus four and seven versus seven. It's a little more competitive. And then we go to competitive, which is nine versus nine, 11 versus 11, which requires travel. And we also have a-- we are now starting a UPSL Youth Academy League that we're part of. And we are the only club in Northern Arizona as part of this league. You've got to meet certain criteria, and fortunately, we met it. And we also have the only men's semi-professional team, fully funded by donors, to create opportunities for kids that have graduated high school or are in high school, to be looked at by colleges and professional teams. And again, we're the only UPSL team in Northern Arizona. We also have an affiliation with Yavapai College in that our sporting director, Georgie Manzola, who's done an incredible job since he moved here three years ago, is also the head soccer coach at-- men's soccer coach at Yavapai College. Rosie DeWes is the women's head coach and also our director of coaching on the women's side. And Nico Pino is assistant coach to Georgie at the men. So we wanted to be fully integrated from the little youth, from four years old, all the way through semi-professional to college. And again, our whole mission is to create opportunities for our local kids. We also have been approved for Top Soccer Special Needs Program. We're only one of four clubs in the state that have been approved. I was flabbergasted when I heard there are 750 special needs students in the Quad Cities schools and with very limited opportunities. So we made a commitment to start a special needs program. We have the individual, has a master's degree in special needs, and we'll be putting that together shortly. The last thing that we're striving for is a semi-professional USL II team, and that's part of the reason we need a facility like this due to the requirements. And that is for college players that have aspirations of playing in the pros. So it's a feeder system into the MLS, the USL. So that's on the board as well. We've had expansive, explosive growth. Last year, season, we had 130 players. This season, we have 413 players. And like I said, that's growing daily. We're getting children registering every day. We're now the largest competitive youth soccer club in the Quad Cities. I think the word's getting out there that we just don't focus on soccer. We devote-- we really dedicate a lot of time to the holistic player, individual. So we're being accepted. We also have an international connection through APFC, run by Bernat Francasa from Barcelona, Spain. He has his headquarters now in Encinitas, California. He provides our curriculum, and it's-- his father was the vice president of FC Barcelona, which is one of the top three clubs in the world for youth development. His father was the vice president, and all his methodology comes right from FC Barcelona, which is considered the best, where Messi came through and he has the top players in the world came through that development program. Like I said, we are fully integrated with the youth, college, and globalization. We like to try and take our kids internationally to play because it's not the soccer, it's the cultural exchange. I took three teams to Brazil and four teams to Spain. And a lot of these kids would have never got out of the country. And they always talk about their experiences internationally more than anything. I took my first group out in the 90s, and I'll see them today, and the first thing they bring up, I remember that trip to Brazil. It was just eye-opening for them because they never had that opportunity. We've, just in our short period of time, we've helped 18 players play at the collegiate level. Three players were accepted into the Barca Residency Academy here in the U.S. It's a residential academy where the best players from around the world come, and it's backed by FC Barcelona out of Spain. One player went on and signed a professional contract in the Spanish First Division. Our UPSL semi-professional team coming from a small town, 80% local players, competed with the best teams in the Western United States. We finished first in our regular last season. And numerous players that came through our program, even though they didn't play college, we encouraged and helped them get into college. So we're just trying to expand their opportunities. And for the future, the reason we wanted Georgie and Rosie to be part of our club and Yavapai Colleges, right now, the colleges' scholarships are going to all international players, even at the Juco level. So our goal is, within four to five years, to have 60% of the rosters at the local colleges in Prescott be our kids from our community, rather than giving the opportunity to international kids. We'd like to see our kids get those scholarships and advantages. Now, the proposal. OJBFC proposes to contribute up to $2.5 million for the construction of a FIFA-quality synthetic soccer field at Kenlin Lee Park, and also do some cosmetic refurbishment of the common areas. And we also commit to resurfacing the synthetic field between years 10 and 12. And I was told today by FieldTurf that their warranty goes 14 years, so it could go out as far as 14 years, but we're committed to resurface it with, because we don't want the city to have any obligation. Therefore, obviously, the city won't have any obligation to the field for at least 20-plus years. Key benefits of a synthetic field, it's much, much less maintenance costs, significant water conservation, and Kristi will talk about that. And we can increase the usage two to three times more than a natural grass field. You don't have to rest it. It can have constant use. You can use it in the rain as long as there's no lightning. So the short of it is, we can get a lot more use out of the same field. It can support 2,000 to 3,000 hours of play per year. Natural grass can only support 5,000 to 800. To give you an idea, Yavapai College Women's has a game today, but the field is flooded, so they have to play at Prescott High School. And we've had one of the college games canceled because there was a leak underground, and it flooded the goal mouth, so they couldn't even play the game. They had to postpone it. And what we're really excited about is, this will be a one-of-a-kind FIFA-quality field. Most fields in America are built as cheaply as possible, whereas we're going to spend the extra money to make it FIFA-quality, so it'll be one of the best fields in the state. Let's see. City of Prescott, we acknowledge the IGA agreement. We're really mindful of it, and we will work and collaborate closely with Yavapai College and the city. We think we can continue to use the same hours that we have been, but we can finalize that if this is approved, if our proposal is approved. We believe OJBFC's proposal is a win-win-win opportunity for the city, Yavapai College, and OJBFC. The only three requests we have for putting up this money, a lot of people have a lot of strings to the money they donate. My wife and I donate. We don't even like our name showing up. That's why this is uncomfortable for me to do this today, but because of the kids, I'm doing it. We're seeking a 25-year prepaid lease agreement, so we put up the $2.5 million. We would build the field and then basically be as if we prepaid the rent for the next 25 years. And it's equivalent to $100,000 per year over a 25-year period. And right now, I think we only spend maybe $14,000 a year, if that. So this is, goes well above what our normal payments would be to the city. And at the end of the day, the city will have an incredible facility at no cost to them. Our other request is that OJBFC gets a right of first refusal for our programs, and then we would schedule the public use around that. One thing that's really important to Georgie, myself, and my wife, is the naming the field. The stadium remains the same. It's the Kenlin Lee Park right now, but OJBFC would love to have it named the Michael Pantoloni Field, because we feel Mike did incredible things for the City of Prescott, Yavapai College. He was just inducted into the Italian Sports Hall-- Italian Hall of Fame for winning eight national championships. He's been inducted into the Hall of Fame at the collegiate level. It's unprecedented what Mike did, and he's brought so much notoriety to this area that we would love to be able to name the field, the Mike Pantoloni Field. And I think there is a precedent already in that the skate park is called the Michael Fan Community Skate Park at Kenlin Lee Park, so it'd be similar to that. Obviously, everything stays intact with the Kenlin Lee. We just want to name the field after Mike. Timeline, this is, we really want to be open by April 15th, which would be the kickoff of our next year for OJBFC. And FieldTurf believes they can do it, but we really want to be up and running for the World Cup, which starts June 11th, 2026. There's going to be a wave that hits this country that's going to be enormous. The World Cup is the biggest sporting event in the world. Just as a fun fact, 5 billion people will watch the World Cup compared to 127.7 million that watched the Super Bowl. So soccer's growing incredibly in this country, and we would be, we would love to be ready and have our activities at the same time the World Cup is going on. And we know this can, the timeline can be met. All the plaques and all the notoriety, and will remain at Kenlin Lee. I just took pictures of each of them, just so you know, everything will stay there. We're not going to touch any of that. Benefits of a FIFA-quality synthetic field, obviously economic and tourism boost to the city, long-term infrastructure asset for the facility at no cost to the city, and limited maintenance costs over a 20-year period. It also will strengthen community partnerships. We think that because it's so centrally located, my wife and I own 20 acres in the southern part of Chino, where we were going to build our facility initially. But when this opportunity came up, this is so perfect for what we're trying to do. It incorporates the whole Quad Cities, and I think it would help Yavapai College and especially the City of Prescott. And also, by our donation, we're hoping it can encourage other Prescott residents to donate funds towards other facilities in Prescott. I think, you know, you try and lead by example, and that's what we're trying to do. City of Prescott, Yavapai College, and OJBFC would definitely have an identity and culture at this stadium. It'll really bring life back to Kenlin Lee, which it would be so neat to see, much like the international clubs around the world. Other benefits, player development, obviously having fields that are first-class, it'll help us with our player development on first-rate fields. Coaching development, we're huge on coaching education because everybody blames the players, but without good teachers, you can't have good players. So our emphasis is on educating our coaches, so our kids get the maximum benefit. The other area that's underserved in Arizona overall, and especially Northern Arizona, is referee development. We have the referee coordinator now affiliated with our club, and we're really going to have a strong emphasis on getting our youth involved in the referee development, which I think is really important. And then finally, obviously, hosting an attraction. A field like this is going to bring in all kinds of different opportunities for the city, for heads in beds and spending at the restaurants. Just some quick facts, soccer's been the fastest-growing sport in the Western United States, the second fastest across the states. The only one that outgrew it was lacrosse, but that's primarily in the Northeast and Mid-Atlantic states. So soccer's always comes in first nationwide. Let's see. Now, these are just basic renderings of what the field would look like. So obviously, this is Kenlin Lee looking down from up above. We would have a 11v11 field, it's FIFA size, and two 9v9 fields across the 11v11 to maximize our training with our age groups. And then we're hoping to get two to three 4v4 fields at the top of it, depending on what our retention requirements will be. That way, we can service every age group, 4v4, 7v7, 9v9, and 11v11. This is a more detailed look of what it would look like, and we will have acknowledgement to OJBFC signs, Yavapai College, and the City of Prescott. This is an important one, because Musco Lighting, they have become so efficient through the cost of lighting a field to, they can be pinpoint accurate, so there's no overspray of the lighting. I mean, it's right on the field. So if we upgrade, right now, I believe your lights are 30 candle foot. We'd like to bring it to 50 candle foot, but even at 50 candle foot, it'll be more direct than what you see here. It's pinpoint accurate. It shouldn't disturb the neighborhood at all. And this will add to the historically quaint infield stadium. Again, this is just, shows you how pinpoint Musco can get their lighting. It's just amazing how they're efficient. And that's it. And that's our kids loving the beautiful game.
Questions? Councilman Gambogi?
That was a very impressive presentation.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know much about soccer, so I need a little orientation. Before I went through 12 surgeries, I used to play senior softball. And we'd play on fields that were striped out for soccer. What's the difference between the soccer there and the soccer you're proposing?
To be honest, right now, we're the opposite of your experience. We have to train right now on baseball fields. We only get an outfield. Up until this year, we couldn't even put our soccer goals on the field. So we would just show up, and we'd have to bring all our equipment.
So you're, you are out at Pioneer Park now?
Yeah, we use every park in the Quad Cities. I mean, we're growing so rapidly, yes.
I think you mentioned you were here, you've been here in Prescott 13 years.
Correct.
But it sounds like you've been in this before Prescott, huh?
Yeah.
So where were, where'd you do this before?
I grew up in Philadelphia. That's where my, my parents had all their businesses and--
Fly Eagles Fly.
You got it. And Mike's even wearing a Flyers shirt tonight, today. Yeah. So, yeah, I grew up in Philadelphia, and, you know, I just, I saw what my parents did for decades, and we wanted to do the same.
Now, you're looking at the field, but is there any other, like, class, do you have classroom facilities in mind for training?
Yeah, we've talked to Yavapai College about doing a joint college prep program. We've held college prep programs where we flew a national championship coach from Monroe College, Marcus Dimanardo here, and he brought all the families together and explained to them what it takes to just-- them what it takes to just apply to college, the process, because scholarships are very limited. So we really stress the academic side, because if a college coach can get and give a player an academic scholarship over a sporting scholarship, it's to his advantage. So we've had kids get academic scholarships, not even soccer scholarships, and they ended up playing. One of them was Robbie. He started off Yavapai College, and now he's at Embry-Riddle.
Earlier, you had an emphasis of getting this all finished by the World Cup. Why is that important?
It's going to be such a buzz when it hits this country. I mean, you can already feel it now. I mean, people come from all around the world. The kids are going to be so hyped. You know, it's just going to be something that's going to be special. Every four years, and especially the host country, the country goes crazy.
Mm-hmm.
It's just an incredible experience.
And you mentioned Michael Pantoloni. Tell me again, what's his history and why name the field after him?
Mike was the coach of Yavapai College for...
Oh, okay.
I can let him speak more about the specifics, but he came here to Yavapai College when they really didn't have much of a program, and he ended up winning eight national championships.
Got you.
Which is unprecedented. And he's just an amazing human being, and he's done so much, bringing notoriety to the city. We would just like to... I didn't even meet Mike until a couple months ago. I've heard all kinds of stories about him, but as soon as I met him, I was like, you know, he deserves something like this.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo that. That was a great presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Very, very good. You know, I thought I saw it when I read this last night, but how many games a year are you intending to have there?
I have no... Do you have any idea?
Yeah, I mean, we host anywhere from 10 to 15 games a weekend.
On a Saturday?
On a Saturday.
On a Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they just run one...
Is it every single weekend, or do you take a break off?
No, we usually take breaks off.
In the winter?
Yeah, the season starts August 1st, and there's a break November 15th, I think it is, and then it starts up again mid-January.
Yeah, my son was in soccer many years ago, and I seem to remember 80 games for the year, trying to get him there. But anyway, so also, other organizations, in the agreement, they'll be allowed to basically approach you?
Of course.
And there'll be other... And is there going to be a fee attached to that?
Yeah, I think the lease agreement says that we are required to charge the city required fee.
Yeah, okay.
So yes.
Yeah.
The only thing we're asking for is that, since we're putting the money in, we'd like to get priority first right. So if we fill our time slots, then whatever's left over, the community can use.
Yeah, that field, I live actually right up Washington. I'm on South Washington, so I can see those lights you're talking about when there's games from my porch. But anyway, so one other thing, I wanted to just probably direct this at our city manager. Once we have the presentation on the savings for the city, I'd like to propose that we take that savings for the next 20 years, put it in an account, let it earn some interest, because in 22 or four years, we will have to replace that, and I think it's going to be a hit. So it'd be nice to have the money sitting there to be able to cover the costs. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Glenn, are there any conflicts with any other youth soccer organizations? I know when my kids were little, they both played AYSO, and I was both a coach and a referee. I thought I was going to die one day when I'm trying to referee two different fields and two different teams. But I was amazed at that time, and that was 25, 30 years ago, how much interest in youth soccer had grown. And now that we have professional leagues throughout the United States, even my eye doctor's daughter signed a contract and played professionally in Europe.
Wow.
So I know how much the World Cup and the other organizations have grown so dramatically. The special needs program that you're proposing, is that actually created, or it's a proposed organization?
No, the state of Arizona, well, it's a national program. The state oversees it, and you have to apply for it because you have to have the proper credentials for them to allow. And the reason I wanted to, there's a multitude of reasons, but when I took our team to Spain, there was a division for special needs, and I took our teams to go watch it. And it was so exciting to watch, and it was so impactful that I said, we got to do this. So once we heard the top soccer does have a program for us, we found the right person to run it. She's got the master's degree and teaches in the schools here, so we're going to kick it off, but it'll be highly specialized, obviously.
Are there any other youth soccer organizations that you're competing for field time right now?
Yeah, of course. I mean, there's all kinds of activities right now. As far as competition, we don't look at ourselves as competition. Whenever OJB hosts, I fly professional coaches in from around the world, and we open it up to every club in the area. We've had clubs come in from Flagstaff, from Cottonwood, Sedona. We have opened up the Yavapai Soccer Club. We've opened it up to AYSO. Everybody's invited at no cost. So we don't look at it as we're competing with them. We're just enhancing the education for soccer and what we do. A lot of them would choose not to come because unfortunately, our program, fortunately for us, our program's really catching on, and more and more kids are coming to us. Families are seeing we're different by design on what we're trying to accomplish with the kids, so we're getting a lot of kids from other clubs. But I don't view it as competition. I just view it as alternatives, just like a family would have public school, basis, whatever. They can just choose where they want to...
When you have a limited field space, there's bound to be a competing needs to use that space.
Correct.
What's that retention field on your schematic? What's the...
I just put a retention area. Water has to run off. Right now, with natural grass, it penetrates and just goes underground. With art of synthetic fields, we'll have a drainage system that brings all the water to one location, and that'll be part of the design process. Like I said, we want to have three, fourVfour fields if we can get them, but if we can't, everything I could find so far, we would need about that much area for retention.
Well, I hope you're aware of the fact that when we have 100-year rainfall, it doesn't happen once every 100 years. It happens during 20 minutes during a monsoon downpour.
Yeah, they'll take into consideration all that. I mean, the civil engineers understand all that.
What are your concerns about being able to have this field material be able to be resistant to vandalism and things like that that may occur?
Well, we're planning on keeping the fencing around it. The only fencing we would remove is the baseball backstops that go around it. So it looks like it's not being vandalized as it is. So to be honest, I haven't even thought about that, because it looks like it's well-protected now.
What else do I have? We do have a naming policy in the city, so you might want to review that. And I can't see Mike over there behind that big post. But, you know, Mike, why don't you come up? I'd like to hear your comments about this. I mean, no one has more legitimate, large-scale understanding of football, which is what they call it everywhere else. We call it soccer. And having Mike Pantoloni be recently inducted into the National Junior College Athletic Association Foundation Hall of Fame is something that, I know you don't have to brag about it. You've bragged about it with all the national championships you've delivered to Yavapai College. So I'm sure you don't remember, but I was sitting in the Rotary Club about 10 years ago when you came, and we're talking about winding up your career, and to see you here involved in this, I think is pretty exciting. Good to see you, Mike.
Thank you for the invitation, and it's tough to top this guy, but anyway, I didn't score a goal during the entire time, so give all the credit to the players. That's number one. As far as this particular project goes, you guys took a chance. When I say you guys, the City of Prescott took a chance with the sport of soccer in 1989. There was no activity whatsoever when it come to soccer, when my first day on the job at Yavapai College was 8-8, 1988. And I was told to go around town, find a field for intercollegiate soccer, since they did not have one on campus, for whatever reasons, still don't want to have one on campus. So I walked, I drove all around, took about 10 minutes at that time, and I decided, hey, let's go to Ken Lindley Field. And at the time, the college said, well, you're not going to get it. We don't have a good relationship with the city. I go, this place is too small not to work together. So I approached Jimmy Cashlin, who was the director at the time, and he was kind enough to honor our requests. And I told him, we're concerned about every blade of grass, just like you are, and again, we'll do whatever it takes to play intercollegiate soccer there. And our first game that we hosted was guaranteed win night, and the place was overwhelmed with fans, and we did win 13 to nothing. And from there, that place was special for us for 32 years. We won 95% of the games, in large part to the great community support and the best home attendance in junior college soccer. And it was just a fabulous experience for the community, and we turned a negative into a positive, negative being no campus field, and the college team became the community's team. And that's the way we looked at it. We were the community's team, and we're proud of it. And the word Yavapai got around the country quite simply, and they would ask us what Yavapai meant, and we told them it's a Native American word that meant winning soccer. And that's how we, I guess, got our reputation. But again, I think when I say the city took a chance in 1989, they did, because it was the softball capital of the world at the time. And it was heavily softball activities there at Ken Lindley Field. That wouldn't be allowed in my locker room. It was, again, there's a lot of softball activity when we showed up, and we're very grateful to be a part of Ken Lindley Field's history when that comes. But nowadays, as you notice, when it comes to softball, they're at complexes now, multiple field complexes, because that's more efficient way to run tournaments and leagues as opposed to just one site. So if it's going to be soccer only, and Glenn brought it up, it's been underutilized for the last five years, that beautiful historical venue. It's been underutilized the last five years. This would enhance it greatly. It would also make the neighborhood look a little bit better. That old Chinese restaurant on the corner of Washington Avenue and Gurley Street, maybe we can find a suitable tenant, knowing that there's constant activity across the street. So it certainly has a lot of benefits and so forth, and I welcome it. I started in youth soccer myself, and that's why I was still involved in the sport for 50 years as a coach, because of the experience I had in youth soccer. The fun and the winning all came together as a youth, and again, that's the way I coach, you know, for 50 years. We can't forget the element of fun. So again, thank you. Do you have any questions about my background? Yes, I'm an Eagles fan, Flyers fan, Phillies fan, and yeah, 76ers too. But anyway, is there any questions about my soccer background or anything for what it's worth?
Councilman Grady, you had a question. You have a question for Mike or for Glenn? No?
No, let me just say, I've been fortunate enough to receive over 20 individual honors, and it's not about me. It's about the players. It's about the people in the background associated with the program and so forth. My most recent awards, surprisingly, happened just a couple days ago, as far as induction into the National Italian-American Sports Hall of Fame. So anybody have a problem with that? Oh, I'm sorry. So...
You talking to me?
Yeah, Pantoloni? Yeah, I figured that'd probably be Italian. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Great to see you. Councilman Grady, you had a question about something.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I want to say thank you. It's an amazing commitment and contribution that you're proposing to make in our community. As a former youth soccer coach for only two years, named the Columbus Magic, yeah, soccer is just a great sport for young people, and I appreciate, like I said, the commitment that you've made to it from a holistic perspective. So I'm often interested in the tourism impact of an operation like this, and I know at one point in your presentation, you spoke to tripling the number of events. Can you describe that a little bit more?
Well, it's everything from training, because we can train multiple teams. We don't have to worry about rain out, resting the fields. So it's just purely, you get more use out of a regular synthetic field than a natural grass. But we can do a study on how it could impact the community from an economic standpoint, too. But there's no question, when these stadiums are built or when these fields are built, it just increases. We'll be inviting more and more teams. Georgie's talking about doing, he and Mike were talking yesterday about doing a champions' preseason tournament, where they're going to get previous collegiate champion teams to come in and play each other over a two- or three-day period. So it'll just be attracting more and more high-level things, and when people come, they spend.
And what you were saying with heads in beds is we're going to attract a lot of those folks from out of town.
Yeah, we're going to be hosting a lot. We're already getting requests. Even though we don't have fields, we've gotten requests for people coming out of the valley up here in August, September, because it's just too hot. Right now, most of our games are home because nobody wants to play in the valley. So with a field like this, I think it's just going to increase the visitations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you as well for generous offer, great presentation. I've learned a lot in a very short period of time, just being a former recovered soccer mom driving kids around.
You never recover.
I was in charge of oranges, so... But my question is regarding, from what I'm understanding about this arrangement, is that you'll be managing the field? You'll be working the scheduling with any other outside groups? Is that within your wheelhouse of your operations, or are you going to have to build something to do that?
No, we can handle that.
Okay. All right. And I think all my other questions are for the city folks, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. I appreciate it.
And one quick comment, Mike is really humble. He impacted so many individuals that played for him that he came in contact with. He's just, he may not have scored a goal, but he's put a lot of people on the right trajectory in life, so indeed.
IT, can we pull up Rec Services' presentation out? And Kristy, it's 1:45, and we do have one other item, so just want to make you cognizant of that.
Okay, agree. Those are two hard acts to follow, right? So we'll wait for the presentation. So basically, in terms of water savings, so currently, Ken Lindley uses a little more than 2 million gallons of water a year. And as Glenn mentioned, synthetic turf still requires water for a variety of reasons, but not nearly to that extent. So there'll be a significant just environmental savings in water usage. That is roughly, I would say, about a $20,000 annual expense in our budget. So Connie, as you mentioned, that would be perhaps an opportunity to start building our future fund. In terms of maintenance, we spend roughly $15,000 a year on maintenance, and so that's fertilizers, chemicals, changing irrigation heads, you name it, anything that happens on a live, growing turf, that's what we have. We also, just on that space, we have about $35,000 in labor, which I wouldn't consider that a savings. They would be redistributed throughout the system, and there will still be some work being done. being done at Ken Lindley, but by and large, the OJBFC will be taking care of all of that.
Councilman Gamboge, you have a question for Kristi?
Kristi, this looks like a wonderful proposal. But I want to ask this question on behalf of Patrick Grady. The proposal is to take out grass, save $2 million. Is it, are there savings we see on paper, the net or the gross in water savings?
Net.
Net. So you're including the amount of water that you need to put on the astroturf?
Correct.
All right. So, once upon a time, on a city council meeting a long time ago, we were talking about the subject of PFOS. Like, our deputy city manager's wearing a permanent press shirt that's got PFOS in it. But I was told at the time of that meeting, this is, I wanted to get some clarity, that astroturf produces PFOS. We got a well shut down at the airport because of PFOS. So could you talk to that subject? I mean, is there, what do we do? Because I'm trying to look at the cost benefit between converting to astroturf, but what is that impact of PFOS creation if it is created?
Yeah, thank you. And if Glenn, so the contractor that Glenn is proposing to work with has installed over 20,000 synthetic turf fields.
30,000.
30,000. Oh, pardon.
We'll all be dead.
But the world, but technology has improved that environment, and so I'll punt over to Glenn.
Yeah, the company we're proposing to use is FieldTurf, they're the largest in the world. They've done 30,000 synthetic fields. When we told them our priorities, number one was safety of the kids, was our number one priority, and then performance and playability. When you add those three components up, they're considered, they win 100% of the projects that they bid on. They're extremely tested through the EPA standards for any kind of carcinogens. They have all kinds of studies they've done. They have different products they use. Some are corked that don't rely on any PFOS. There's, they've had their pile, which is the grass looking portions, tested over and over, and there's no PFOS in those. So to answer the question, I think in the old days, there were probably issues, but the technology's advanced so much, and the studies are coming out, that it's much safer now. And we can provide that before we sign the contract.
The other question I have, what other uses have we made of Ken Lindley Field?
So I believe I have that in my presentation. Oh. So generally, over the last couple of years, the majority use has been OJB and Yavapai College. There's been other soccer use. Unfortunately, those users have disbanded. We have had a couple of local schools use the field once a year for their end of school year event, and we could accommodate another park for that group. And we also have our Moonlight Movie Night out there in the summers. And again, we have control of that, so we can put that in another park and perhaps rotate it throughout the community. So it's, so we're touching more of the community, rather than having everyone come to one location. The other question about capacity, right, are, is there more soccer than fields? Generally, yes. However, with this, as Glenn mentioned, they're currently using Pioneer Park and Heritage Park. They will be able to pull those uses onto Ken Lindley, because not only will they have the large field, they'll have the smaller fields, and there's a lot of adaptability in practice. So by pulling them, that adds capacity for other users.
So you're saying there's no currently scheduled events that can't be accommodated?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I wanted to kind of ask a question that Ted Gamboge had asked about. That's a product I used in my construction business. We did a lot of zero scapeing with our custom homes, and I did look into that years ago. And I, but I think what you're referring to, Ted, was the leaching. The process of the PFOS was in the actual manufacturing. And in the manufacturing areas, they have a very confined filtration system. And I don't think it was actually in the grass part of it. I think it was in the backing many years ago, when the synthetics first came out. But it is a synthetic product. But in the manufacturing firms or the companies, they do have a pretty sophisticated filtration system. So it's not really in the leaching. Once the product is, you know, put and installed, it's more in the manufacturing of it. And I do think, as you said, they've gotten a grip on their products that they're using, so.
Yeah, and FieldTurf does most of the FIFA. They're doing nine FIFA fields for the World Cup in North America. And FIFA's very stringent on the environmental side of it. So I know if FIFA's signing off on it, we know it's really safe.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, I guess, to both of you. What is, because you'll be taking care of replacing this in 10 to 14 years, and then thereafter, after the 25 year mark, it'll be our responsibility. What is the cost of disposal of one of these fields? And what's the cost of replacement? I'm assuming your big expense will be preparing it to become a synthetic field, but what would, so that's $2.5 million. What's the cost of just replacing the field down the road?
Yeah, in today's dollars, it's $750,000, so figure a million.
Cost of disposal, is there something special of where this has to go?
No, because it's all natural products, and they take care of it. FieldTurf takes.
FieldTurf will haul it away.
Haul it off, yeah.
Okay. At their expense, or is it part of?
No, it's part of the cost.
Part of the cost.
Yeah.
The $750,000, soon to be a million.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, not soon to be. 14 years from now. I'm just guessing.
All right, are there any other council concerns or questions? No, then, did you have another one?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Ferworth.
All to Kristi now. Question about the, this is a long-term lease, so we have a charter provision about this. It requires that we post it twice for two weeks in order to give the community the heads up. And the way I'm counting the calendar, we haven't gone two weeks. Are you in alignment with that?
I'll punt over to Joe Young.
I do think we meet the charter requirements. It's once a week for two weeks, as you mentioned. So it is two separate publications, at least a week apart, which is what we've done. Some statutes and some charter requirements have a minimum time period before the publication and the meeting, but that's not how this section's word is, just two publications a week apart.
But the way I was reading it, it's prior to approval and execution. It has to be at least one time per week for two weeks. So that gives the public 14 days to catch eye or wind of this, and.
I would say, I don't think we read it, that wasn't our interpretation. I do think that, as you know, it's on the voting meeting, it doesn't have to be approved today, we could set this off if you wanted to. But I think it meets the requirements of that charter provision, because it was two publications in two separate weeks.
All right, I have a different point of view. From a public, I'm worried about the public, because this is a long-term lease. Have we engaged the Moonlight Movies producers, whoever that organization is, and are they cool with moving?
We have not. We work with them, and we pay them to do that, so we can let them know where we'll pay them at a different location.
I didn't realize we were paying them to do that.
That might change, but.
That's interesting. Okay, so we can move it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Grady, and we have to wrap this up. We have another item on the agenda for the study session.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, so the naming policy that we've established provides for a process. And so is the contract language then recognizing that we're not making that decision today?
Yes, it does. It recognizes that that's a desire, but it has to move forward with the other process, and OJB is familiar with that.
Okay. And one of the other things that we've done recently is around the event impacts on our community, and particularly on tourism. We're looking at economic impact analyses, and I think we should have had something along this line done for this event, too, because we're asking it from other providers. Thirdly, and last, so obviously, they've already lined up contractors to undertake this project. Does that create any, we've just delegated our bidding process to them? Or how does that work contractually?
That works the same as a lot of the leases we have in the city, where we lease, we have ground leases, and companies will then build, for example, at the airport, they build a hangar. So they are the ones that are responsible for the construction, they're responsible for the contractors. We then, once it becomes part of the ground, then it becomes property of the city, but it's still subject to the lease. So this is, it's, I guess you're asking, is that legal? Yes, it's legal.
Mayor, you do have public comment, if you'd like to take it.
I'm not going to take public comment.
Okay.
All right, we, thank you very much for your presentation, and we'll move on to item B.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation and discussion regarding a possible shift of the primary runway at Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Lovefield.
And I do want to mention to whoever, whoever wanted to make public comment, that this item is going to be considered on our voting meeting, and you're welcome to make a public comment at that time.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of council. Rick Crutter, Airport Director, with a weak voice, just getting over the crud. So my apologies. Wanted to kind of tee this topic up. Back in March, March 25th, council approved a task order for Dibble Engineering to do a number of things that had to do with a parcel of land just south of Highway 89, between the, the south end of the runway. So they, the big part of this was to do the environmental assessment, appraisals that led to a spring decision to buy a portion of the Deep Rock Ranch. Another big part of that, though, was to tie that into this notion of a runway shift that would happen at the same time as a runway extension. So the summer, back in June, you may recall, we had two open houses at the Centennial Center. We had some great involvement that Mr. McDermott's going to talk about in just a minute. And then this is the last piece of that effort. We're going to bring it all together for you. We've appraised the land, we've done the category exclusion, we purchased the property, we've done open houses, so we're going to tie it all up in a nice, neat boat for you and talk about it this afternoon. I'd like to acknowledge a couple of our Airport Advisory Committee members, Chair Mike Geddy and Jim Huffman, hardworking guys, so appreciate you being here and being part of the discussion. So without further ado, a man that needs no introduction, has been here many times, Mr. Charlie McDermott from Dibble and Associates.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. Again, I'm Charlie McDermott, the Aviation Planning Manager for Dibble Engineering. And we're going to talk today about the public workshop that we had back in June, and discuss a little bit about the proposed runway shift for the airport. First, I want to just recap the public workshop that we did have. We had two of them, as Rick mentioned. The first one was on June 25th. We had 61 residents attend that workshop. The next one we had was the following afternoon on June 26th. That event, we had 40 residents attend that one. During the public workshop, we allowed the residents to provide written comments. We received 27 comment cards from the residents. In general, they were very supportive of the airport and seemed to appreciate the willingness of the city to discuss the airport with the community. Some of the concerns that we received were about noise, aircraft noise around the airport, the flight paths that the aircraft use, and some concern about hours of operations, particularly with some of the flight schools. Overall, I think from my perspective, I think it was a well-attended event. Many times, sometimes communities don't come out in support of an airport, but in this case, I think the general sense from the community was they were supportive about what we were proposing. Talked to a lot of folks, had, I think they were about three hours in length. Folks came early and stayed late, so we had a lot of good dialogue with the community. And I, my perspective is they appreciated the effort. We also provided a handout to the community, so they could take that home with them and read a little bit further about what we covered that evening. And it also included some frequently asked questions, just to help educate on the process. So with that, I have a brief presentation that I'll go through, and take any questions. The first slide I put in here on purpose to show the existing OEI display, the departure display off the end of the primary runway. You've seen this many times, we're going to talk about this a little bit later, but I wanted to just put this up front to make sure folks knew that we were going to discuss that very important topic. So the first slide, and I apologize, I know these are always hard to read, but the FAA requires us to have airport layout plans at a certain scale, and sometimes they're more of a challenge to read. But I believe you have copies, right, okay. Yeah, I know. Sometimes I use a very strong magnifying glass, sometimes. So what you see in front of you, this is the signed airport layout plan, also referred to as the ALP. This was updated from your master plan that was published in 2019. We updated it in 2022 to show some of the additional land acquisition that we're all familiar with. What, so everything starts from this version from 2022. This version that you see is the one that we're proposing to submit to FAA. And I'll just go around this a little bit. So if you start up in the top right, you see two green large tracts of land. That's land that is going to be proposed to be acquired for future aeronautical use at the airport. So again, that's through discussion with the airport, we decided that that land would be wise to acquire that land to protect the surrounding area. What you see in blue or purple, depending on how it comes across on your handout, that is land that has been acquired or that the city currently, historically is currently owned. So some of that land includes a CVID parcel, which will be used for future borrow material for the runway extension. The AED parcel, which is off to the right-hand side of the screen. The north ranch, which you can't see, because again, because of the scale we're required to use, but that's up to the north of the Crosswind Runway. And then the south ranch land acquisition, which is to the left of the drawing, that is land that is, that was proposed to be acquired, but what was acquired, what is shown in green there, right off the end of the runway. And then there's, I believe it's four parcels that were acquired for the Future Air Traffic Control Tower. Okay? Some of the projects that we updated on this version of the airport layout plan is the safe complex, which is up on the north side of the, north side of the page there for Emery Riddle. We, that project is nearing completion, so that project is shown now as an existing feature of the airport. Along with Cutter Aviation, did a significant improvement to their ramp area, so that improvement is also shown. Certainly, as you know, taxiway Charlie, named after myself, was relocated for separation purposes from the main runway and widened. So that was a significant project, and is shown on your airport layout plan as now being a completed project. Okay? What's that?
I said it wasn't actually. It's just Charlie.
Well, you'll find most airports have a taxiway Charlie, so I'm famous, so. Well, you'll find most airports have a taxiway Charlie, so I, I'm famous, so. Some of the newer projects that are shown on your airport layout plan, as I mentioned in, in green are additional land acquisition. The newer locate, the new location for the proposed air traffic control tower will be placed on those four parcels that you acquired for that. And then the, the biggest project that is new to the airport layout plan is the shift of the primary runway. And that, in all fairness, that, that was some confusion with the public when we said shift, but that, that's a term that FAA uses when, when we shift a runway. And what that means is we take some of the runway off one end and we put it on the other end. It doesn't, doesn't mean we're going to reorient the runway, we're not moving it laterally from north to south. It's literally just taking some pavement off one end and putting new pavement on the other end. So in FAA's world, that's called a runway shift. So, so there's no, no lateral change or horizontal change or variation of the alignment of the runway. Okay. So that's, that was described to the public and explained. The benefits of the shift are numerous. One of the biggest benefits is, is it gets the runway protection zone and that's a trapezoid, trapezoidal shape off the end of every runway that is used for protection of the runway end. That runway protection zone now with the shift will come entirely on the airport property, which, which is very desirable. The FAA prefers that the runway protection zone certainly be protected, but that you have ultimate control over it to the extent that's practical. And in this case, with shifting the runway, it gives us the ability to bring that runway protection zone all within the airport, the airport property, which is very important. It also helps you from, from a noise perspective. As we take some of the runway off one end and we put it on the other end, that means the aircraft are going to be taking off that much further from the Deepwell Ranch community. That certainly won't eliminate noise, but it will help move that noise impact further away from the community. So that's, that's a benefit of, of the shift. It also eliminates the issues associated with the existing obstacles for the, the OEI Splay that we've talked about many times for, for, for several years. What I'm going to do is I'm going to flip down to that so we can discuss that a little bit. So this is the existing OEI Splay as it resides today. You can see the various variations of color representing how far the terrain is away from that Splay. And you can see that the, the brighter the red, the closer we are to the, the terrain is to that Splay.
Councilman Gamboge, you had a question for Charlie?
Yes, sir.
Pushing the wrong button. You're shifting the runway. Is it, is this part of the runway lengthening? It is. Okay.
Yeah.
I think you said, well, we just take one part of it here and move it over there, which meant, sounded like you're going to dig up the runway that's no longer used. Why would you dig it up? Why, why wouldn't you just leave it there?
Well, what, what we're proposing on the airport layout plan is, is shifting that runway. So in other words, moving the threshold to a new permanent location.
Sure.
What happens with that pavement after that is really up, up to the airport and, and you folks, you can leave it, stripe it off, so it can't be used by aircraft. But from FAA's perspective, that, that pavement no longer is usable for aircraft. So in their minds, it doesn't exist. So what many airports will do is they, they will stripe it off, so no aircraft use it. And then quite frankly, it depends on the ultimate condition of the pavement. If it, if it becomes so deteriorated that it becomes a FOD problem, then an airport may remove it at some point. But you could, you could leave that pavement in place, just stripe it off. But in, in FAA's mind, that pavement really doesn't exist from, from, from an airspace perspective.
Charlie, if I could add to that too. Councilman Gamboge, the definition of the Splay really begins at the departure end of the runway. So until you move that departure end for the south, whether it's striped off or removed, then the Splay remains the same. Does that make sense? So it's really a technical bit.
Yep.
And Charlie, I didn't, I didn't give you the clicker training, but I think there's a pointer on that, that you can point to parts of the map.
Now you, now you.
Yeah, now I'll tell you.
Councilwoman Ferworth?
Well, that was the wrong button.
Thank you. Follow up to what Ted was talking about. I saw on the cover note that some members of the community wanted to keep that pavement there and I guess stripe it off, so it's legal for FAA purposes. What was their rationale for wanting to keep the pavement? Did they explain? Do we understand why?
I think, well, go ahead, Charlie.
Well, I mean, first, you know, any, any type of project like that is expensive. So from a cost perspective, striping is certainly less expensive than removal. But it really comes down to, you know, is that, is it such an issue that you really want to spend the money to remove that pavement or is striping it off adequate? So it's really, it's.
I think the comment was really along the lines of, you know, airfield pavement is, has a, has a use, right? So more pavement's always better, more runway length is always better. But again, going back to Councilman Gamboge's question, until you make that, until you disable it, you know, so it's not available for a takeoff or a landing, you don't move the Splay, right? So it could be, to Charlie's point, if you, if you put chevrons out there and make it in case of an emergency, right? If you had a, you know, brakes fail or an engine fail or whatever, and it's a rollout area, that's certainly acceptable. But we need to physically make, make, make sure that the flying community understands that that pavement is not available for takeoff or landing, but in emergencies, everything goes. So I think that was the gist of the, of the request or the comment that we heard.
Yep. So, so that's the existing OEI Splay. So when you look at, what does it look like once we shift the runway? This graphic represents the, the gradient of the surface of the Splay compared to the terrain itself. So you can see the red is, is logically much closer to the end of the runway. And then as you get out, it, it gets more blue and green, which is greater distance, which, which is a good thing because that eliminates the issues of any potential obstacles.
Could you go back and forth?
Sure. Oops. Sure. So you can see that by shifting that runway, it really, it really picks it up pretty quick. And that, that's really the, the, one of the biggest benefits of, of the shift is it just takes it right out of play. Okay. Whoops. Sorry. I apologize. I didn't get trained in this. So again, this is the airport layout plan, the proposed one with the shift. In addition to that.
Just make it in Charlie.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ferworth?
So it takes it out of play, which means we don't have to think about purchasing that anymore.
Correct.
From a taxpayer point of view. I just wanted to make the connection for the listeners that we've, in previous budgets, put millions of dollars out there as the potential that we may have to buy it. And with this shift, we don't have to think about that anymore.
Correct. That is one of the biggest benefits of, of the shift.
So everything west of what we've purchased is no longer needed to be purchased.
That's correct.
Good.
From the, from the departure Splay perspective, correct. Yep.
And Councilman, to put a fine point on that, the remaining seven of the eight parcels that were considered previously for acquisition would not be needed if, if this is codified, this approach is codified, which we estimate is about a $14 million investment. So just put a fine point on it.
The, the biggest project that's shown on your proposed airport layout plan is certainly the runway extension that we've been, we've been talking about for, for a number of years. That project, certainly that project will remain on the airport layout plan truly as your, your signature project for the, for the airport, for the, for the foreseeable future. The other project that's on here, which I'm going to zoom in on a little bit, is what we call the end around taxiway. So if you look at, pretty much in the middle of the drawing there, you'll see a, a green taxiway that goes around the end of the runway. It's probably 25 or 35 feet wide. That, that is what FAA refers to as an end around taxiway. That allows, again, with the runway shifted, that pavement is no longer available. So getting aircraft, smaller general aviation, general aviation aircraft around the end of the runway can be provided by this end around taxiway.
Use the pointer.
Where's the pointer? Is that this guy? Where's the pointer?
Pointer's broken, sorry.
Pointer's broken. My guess is battery's dead, but. No.
Are you referring to the green trapezoid line at the end of the runway? Is that what?
You see right at the end of the physical runway, there's a, a green trapezoid that goes, that's the run.
That's it.
Yep. That's the end around. So the, the benefit of that, again, the, the end around taxiway is meant just for the smaller general aviation aircraft. Commercial service aircraft would not use this. And you may say, well, why, why wouldn't we take advantage of that? Because it, the end around taxiway is sized by the aircraft type or by the aircraft size. So if you were to do an end around taxiway for commercial service, it would be a lot further to the left and would take up a lot more space. And quite frankly, it, it just wouldn't, because we did do a layout for that, but it just doesn't fit for a commercial service. And quite honestly, I mean, with taxiway Charlie, you, there's really, there would really be no reason for a commercial service aircraft to, to need to get from that, that side all the way around. It just, it wouldn't be practical. So commercial service aircraft would not use this end around taxiway. And certainly that would be controlled by the tower. They would make sure that they give clearance for an aircraft to use that. And they certainly wouldn't allow a commercial service aircraft to try to get around there. So this is the airport.
Councilman Gamboge, you had a question?
I sure do. You know, we've talked about the airport so much, it reminds me of Abbott and Costello routine of who's on first. So we're not buying $14 million worth of land because we shifted the runway. Those, in that slide, you got those two green areas, you said that's future acquisition. What's the price tag on that?
So the, the green areas, those have been on the ALP prior, prior to actually 2022, I believe. And round dollars, those are owned by the state. So they're probably, I think, Ryan O'Hara, you'd estimate at a million to $2 million in acquisition cost. The reality is that when you abandon those entitled properties on the south that are fully entitled, they're within a divulent agreement, they have utilities, I mean, that's the most expensive property we can buy. So by order of magnitude, it's, you're probably talking about a much greater bang for the dollar, right? You're talking about hundreds of acres versus tens, and you're talking about millions versus tens of, tens of millions. So it's a, a big, a big dichotomy.
Yeah. So this is the airport, what FAA refers to as the Exhibit A. It's, it's an inventory of all the parcels that you own and parcels that you want to acquire. So you can see again, the, the purple or the blue color is, is the land that's been acquired. And then the green represents land that is proposed for future acquisition. We shaded the south ranch property that you just acquired, green, just, just so, just for emphasis, so you can see where it is. The, the north ranch missed this, this version, but you can see the north ranch, 74 acres, it's also, was acquired a year or so ago on this map. So this, this is part of the overall airport layout plan drawing set, which comprises about 42, 40, 42 or 43 drawings. That will be with your approval. That'll all be submitted to FAA for their review and approval of the airport layout plan. But there's one more I want to show you that helps kind of visualize what we're, what we're talking about. So you see on the left-hand side, the blue, that's the, the pavement to be abandoned or removed, but basically is, is the first part of the shift. And then when you look at the right end, right-hand side, you see where that, that pavement has been constructed in blue. And then the extension portion is everything that's yellow beyond that, along with a parallel taxiway Charlie to the north and taxiway Delta, which is shaded in blue to the south. Now there's different funding strategies in terms of FAA and, and state funding, but certainly the yellow, yellow is the, the FAA's eligible portion of it. But the, the shift would also be eligible as well. But we just show it in different colors for ease, so people can visualize what we're, what we're proposing.
And Charlie, just to be clear, we would not abandon or take up the pavement on the left side, the shifted pavement, until replacement were done on the, on the north side.
Right, exactly. Yeah, yeah. And that, you know, that, that has to really be the, the first portion of the, of the, of the project. You know, the, the overall program is get it shifted, get it extended, and then, and work on the actual extension, which is shown in yellow.
Well, obviously, we'll have to acquire more land on the west side or on the east side to make up for the 780 feet shift where, where.
The, the parcel that was acquired back in January by, by the city, the AED parcel, is adequate for both the shift and the extension.
Yeah.
And the safety areas.
Okay. So that should probably end up having a net less cost, wouldn't it?
We believe so, yes.
Do you have any estimate of what the net would be?
Well, I'll, and again, I think you're talking about, even with the ambitious acquisition of land to the west, to the northwest, maybe somewhere in the order of four to five, maybe six million dollars. And then a corresponding savings on the south side of 14. So you could see a net savings of $8 million. You know, and that, and that, this is again, top of mind, back of napkin math, but I think certainly there is a savings. My message to you would be that I think we can get a bigger bang for the buck, make wiser investments, more strategic investments by looking, you know, getting on the other side of the planning curve, right? Preparing for the future rather than trying to respond to the Splay. As, as I mentioned in previous sessions, what's not ever been reconciled by the, on the Splay is the things that are already in place. You know, you've got some houses that are already penetrating the Splays, you've got some, some power lines. So, you know, you start talking about then the, the complete cost of adapting to the existing Splay, it's, it's, it's a lot of money. So I think the shift is, is a little more cost of like, you know, significantly more cost effective overall by the time you anticipate the savings and land acquisition. And then the, you know, mitigation of the risk on the south side.
Councilman Gamboge.
I'm still pushing the wrong button. When you extended runway, how thick is it going to be?
Well, that's, that's the other big part. There'll be a strengthening component. So this is all about satisfying a critical aircraft, which is bigger than a regional jet. So we know that the Firebase, you know, flies narrowbody, you know, MD-87, 737, L-100 aircraft. We'd like to prepare for the next generation of the very large tankers. So as we get into design and go through the environmental assessment, we'll identify a critical aircraft and we'll, you know, the pavement section will be predicated on that critical aircraft.
Because right now, the runway that exists is not able to handle that big of a load, right?
Correct. We do waivers for the, for the tankers.
Okay, so when you do your calculations, the new runway will be thicker than the current runway.
Correct.
And then you'll have to go back over time in the current runway and thicken it up?
Correct.
Thank you.
You bet.
Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So this is just, I want to make sure in my simple mind, I'm getting what we're doing here today. We are eliminating the. We are eliminating the 1,160 feet on the left side of this document in blue. We are approving or studying the approval, soon to be, or whatever we need to do, of the 1,160 feet to the right of blue. But down the road, the lengthening and strengthening is the yellow on the right.
The blue, blue on the right will also be strengthening. I think what Charlie's trying to describe here is the difference between a capacity project and a safety project.
Correct.
The shift is really a safety.
The shift is a safety project, and it's also going to turn out to be a cost savings project versus the original plan of buying lots of land to the left. But, and then the right is where we end up getting into allowing larger aircraft safely.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
So one more slide I want to show you is the, this is, if you remember back a few years, we reran the noise contours based on aircraft that actually operate here in the patterns that they operate within. I just wanted to show you this, this because again, as we shift and extend the runway, these noise contours will, will, will go with it. Okay? So as I mentioned at the outset, certainly it won't eliminate noise on the communities, but it, it should lessen the noise because it's, it's being shifted further away from the community, which is a positive thing. Once, as Rick mentioned, once we get into the environmental, the noise contours have to be rerun anyways because of the age of them. And NEPA requires that you have updated noise contours. So they'll be rerun, showing the shift and the extension. So we'll be able to compare the impact of noise today and what it could look like in the future based on the shift and the extension. So I just wanted to, because I know noise, noise is always a sensitive subject to communities. And that's all we had.
Councilman Gamboge?
This looks like a stroke of genius. And indeed, if it is, thank you.
You're welcome. So Mayor, I think the next action item, we've, the council has previously directed investment in land acquisition and directed extension of the runway. We'd like to get the feedback of council, whether we're on the right track or on the wrong track. And then given that feedback, we'll come back with a resolution to properly codify the approach council wants to take so we have a solid way forward.
Mayor Protem Kantomi?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Rick, you know, having been involved in this since the day I was seated on the council and taking a deep dive into all of this, all these years, the number one complaint from the neighborhood, you know, it's not so much at the airports there, it's always been about the noise to the extent that they complained. I know that we've had a few, few constants on that, but for the most part, I think people are very supportive. And of course, you can't ignore the economic development part of all of this and the, this big scope of the city's finances. I think probably hearing this, the DNL being taken care of, or at least going a long way to mitigating that noise is going to be a really big step towards satisfying some of the complaints in the community. So I'm very excited to hear about that and of course, excited about the savings and the money in the long haul. Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, I know, we've been focusing a lot here on cost, but I think by shifting that runway, we create a additional safety area. You know, we had a plane that, small, single-engine plane that crashed in May of 2022, that lost power coming off the runway and had to sit down about where the currents developments are occurring in the Deepwell Ranch area. They probably could have avoided that location by having that extra length to determine, I've lost power, I've got to set it down, where do I set it down? They may even be able to set it down in that abandoned paved runway area. And then a year later in September 23, we had another aircraft that was fully fueled, but lost power and couldn't gain altitude. And they had set down on the old.
Willow Creek?
Yeah, Willow Creek Road that's been abandoned. So in that case, they would add an extra space to also be able to sit down without putting people or buildings or other people in jeopardy. So I think that's a secondary benefit.
Yes, sir.
That we're going to see here.
Agreed.
And I think especially those Cessna 175s, they can gain altitude a little faster. And that's where most of the complaints come from people that live in the Deepwell Ranch area because the small, single-engine training flights have a tendency to be a little bit more annoying. And the higher elevation they can get, the less annoying they're going to be. It's not going to go away completely, obviously, but we would reduce the impact.
Agreed. And I think Charlie did a great job of talking about by shifting the runway and extending, you, you solved the OEI splay issue, you moved the noise to the northeast, you opened up the geometry for the end around taxiway. But what's not often talked about is by moving the threshold of the primary runway, which is also the prevailing runway, six tenths of a mile to the north, the ability for those small aircraft to climb against rising terrain is going to be very, very impactful. So I think there's some, a variety of good, good reasons for doing this.
You can count on my support for this.
Okay. I, I see a lot of nods, so if it's the pleasure of council, we'll prepare a resolution, bring it back next month. Your consideration.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. And we appreciate your runway, too. For the taxiway, Charlie. Taxiway. All right. That concludes our study session for today. So we'll reconvene at 3 o'clock for a voting meeting. And like I said, if somebody has comments on the previous agenda item, it'll be on the voting meeting agenda as well. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.